As you know, we have a very important mission ahead of us. With Council Lady Jessica Abbott leaving, you know, a tremendous void in our city, and we wish her well. We are indeed blessed to have so many qualified people to come forward. But today is the public's opportunity to speak out, and we are welcoming the opportunity. But first, in accordance with Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, and by authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special session of the Virginia Beach City Council Thursday, August 12, 2021, at 4:00 p.m., City Council Chambers, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special session is to allow City Council to allow public comment on the finalists of the candidates to fill the vacant Kempsville District Council seat. Immediately following, the City Council will recess into and convene into a closed session for discussion. Following this discussion, the Council will return to the City Council Chamber, certify the closed session, and then appoint the Kempsville District Council members. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. Okay, and at this point, Madam Clerk, if we could have the roll call?
All present Mayor with the exception of Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Rouse.
Okay, and at this point, we will go forward. If you can call the first speaker, please.
Yes, sir. First speaker will be Ashley McLeod, and then Bobby Gribble.
Hey, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm proud to be able to kick this off and being the first person to give comment today, but I first want to note how lucky we are as a city to have had that many people interested in the Kempsville District to represent us. I think that's something to be especially proud of. What was tricky for you all is to narrow it down to the three that you did for tonight, and so thank you for doing that. I want to let you know that I think all three candidates bring qualities and credentials that should make us all very proud in Virginia Beach, and I know you have a tough decision ahead of you. I'm Ashley McLeod. I am a Virginia Beach resident and a former member of the school board here in Virginia Beach. And for the purposes why I'm here tonight is to support Naomi Astares for the Kempsville District. I am confident that each of you know Naomi personally through her involvement and work in the Virginia Beach Vision Commission, and I'm sure that each of you are aware of the number of things and organizations that Naomi is involved in, and you've seen her resume. Being an active member of the community is of extreme importance, and for anyone wishing to serve in a leadership position. Naomi has that hands down. It's worth noting that Naomi's involvement is also very varied, which I think is of huge importance in order to serve your community. Her diversity of experiences and interests are what I believe are Naomi's most valuable skill sets that she would bring to the Council. Her involvement with Sister City is just one example. Naomi recognizes the importance of relationships, not just neighbor to neighbor, but she recognizes the importance of relationships and economic development in the legislative process and in policymaking. She considers all the perspectives and asks all the right questions, and she comes to the best decision for all involved. It's easy to say that Naomi does her homework. As a homeowner in the Kempsville District, I believe that Naomi will represent that district well. But as a citizen, I'm here to speak from my heart and let you know as a former elected here in Virginia Beach that I truly believe that Virginia Beach needs to have councils and boards that are reflective of their community. So one of the benefits that Naomi brings to this is to represent her Filipino community. I strongly recommend, with all of the qualities that she has and all the skill sets that she brings, that you look at that very important factor and consider that in your decision-making process tonight. She will bring an amazing ability to go and bring us all together, and I think it's time for the City of Virginia Beach to have a board council that reflects its community makeup. There are some people here tonight that actually are not going to be speaking, so I am going to ask anyone who's here tonight that's not speaking but here in support of Naomi if you want to stand up so you can be recognized. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your considering Naomi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Bobby Gribble, and then Brad Martin.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Bobby Gribble, a resident of Kempsville and the Chair of the Historic Kempsville Citizen Action Committee, also a member of the Virginia Beach Historic Preservation Commission. I come here today as a Virginia Beach resident of Kempsville. You've heard so many facts and figures in all these interviews, I've decided to speak from the heart. I support Amelia Ross Hammond as an appointee for the position that Jessica Abbott resigned from. When Amelia was on City Council representing Kempsville, she could be counted on to be an advocate, serving both the citizens of Kempsville as well as the entire Virginia Beach. She was always available to citizens when issues and concerns were brought to her. She reached out to city resources, other citizens and civic organizations, and she got back to you about what could be done to create change. She secured the 2.5 million that Will Sessoms came and announced at the Historic Kempsville Citizen Action Committee. The money has been used to consolidate land acquisitions and develop what is Historic Kempsville. We continue to work on this important development to make Historic Kempsville vibrant. We need Amelia to step in and continue the important work. There are two parcels left to purchase before we can consolidate and invigorate this area. Amelia can seamlessly step in and get to work immediately. She's familiar with Kempsville. For more than 10 years, our Kempsville, in Kempsville Civic Leagues have been working together on shared issues affecting tens of thousands of residents across the district. Mrs. Wilson was there early on, thank you, and has stayed in touch with us to make sure we get all the help we need. Mr. Moss visited early on, and Mr. Dyer hosted us at Regent when we negotiated solutions with Mayor Sessoms and City Managers Board. The work has never stopped. We wrote a letter in 2012 asking Dr. Ross Hammond to become a liaison after being sworn in. She got to know our neighborhoods, concerns and strengths, and became Kempsville's strongest champion like any new person. Like any new person, it took Jessica Abbott a long time to gain that knowledge of our district. Today, our civic leagues still work together to build consensus as visitors like Mr. Tower have seen. While Rocky and Naomi bring strength to the table, in 10 years of regular meetings, they have never stopped by. Amelia has a proven record of being involved successfully. In closing, I'd like to thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Brad Martin, and then Vincent Medina.
Good evening, Brad.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and Councilmembers. My name is Brad Martin, and I've lived at 2305 Bayville Road in the Bayside District for 20 years. Before I get started, I just want to send my best wishes and hopes and thanks to former Council Lady Jessica Abbott. I can't imagine the difficulty of her decision, and I wish her and her family all the best. I'm here this afternoon to support my friend Naomi Astares, and lucky for you, you already know her, and you know what she's done for our city and what she will continue to do with and for our community. So there's really not much for me to say. I don't have to tell you about her business experience, her continuing work with the Sister Cities Association, and her work to stop human trafficking. What I would suggest to you now, though, is that I am confident that Naomi will bring a thoughtful and a unique voice of conciliation to this council in a very consequential time in our city's history. What I can say with certainty about Naomi is that all of her volunteer work, all of her service to the city on boards and committees where she's acted, and all of her outreach in the community, has been totally and completely without any political agenda. Until this very situation over the last few weeks, I don't think Naomi has ever had any thought or intent of standing for an election or appointment or holding any political office. I hope that the fact that she has done all these things without any ulterior motivations or long-term political schemes carries weight with all of you on this council, you who know what it means to altruistically serve the citizens of Virginia Beach, especially in this difficult and sometimes even toxic time of partisan divisiveness. Naomi has been serving the citizens of Virginia Beach for decades, and hers will be a valued and experienced voice to be seated around your table of 11 as you determine the course of our city regarding great schools and safe neighborhoods, stormwater and flooding mitigations, economic development and police pay, and all the other consequential issues that you all face week in and week out. It is Naomi's voice of concerned activism for which I stand up here as an advocate today. I want to thank all of our Kempsville neighbors who submitted their applications for this important appointment. I want to congratulate the three finalists. Amelia and Rocky and Naomi are all wonderful candidates with a long history of service to the citizens of our city, and you all can't go wrong in your decision this afternoon. And just one final note for Councilmen Moss and Jones. If your flooding review committee is looking for an academic review of the city's stormwater models, I would also consider the actual software developers, Computational Hydraulics International, who I would bet would be willing to send some of their engineers here to staff the, to brief the council on the reliability of our city models.
Ah, yes, an unsolicited endorsement.
Not my own, thank you. Thank you all for your time, and thank you for your service to our great city.
Effective use of time management, hey?
Next speaker is Vincent Medina, followed by James Banks.
Welcome, Vince.
Honorable Mayor, goodness, I should have printed this out. I didn't realize how small this is going to be, but I'm welcome.
I've been there.
I'm old school. I gotta, but um, yes, welcome, honorable City Council members as well as our residents of Virginia Beach and our friends and family. My name is Vince Medina. I'm a 20-year Navy veteran, president and owner of Age Advantage, Senior Corps, that's a healthcare, home care company. I'm also the Vice President of Montero Medical Missions and the president of our Filipino-American Lions Club here in Virginia Beach. I am honored, I'm privileged to speak on behalf of Naomi Astares, candidate for the vacant City Council seat in Kempsville District. I was excited to hear that she put her name in and to be considered for this honorable position. I've known Naomi and Roy, her husband, for well over two decades. She's very active, very well-known to our citizens of Virginia Beach, especially our Filipino-American community here in Hampton Roads. She's involved with countless community events in the past two decades. I believe she's the best candidate to fill this important position, as evident in her decades of experience in leadership and management, strategic planning, business development, event and program management, sales and marketing, team building, and public speaking as well, as you heard the other day. Naomi is a small business owner, entrepreneur. She's also the owner of Just Go Travels, and she applies these skills to the daily operations of entrepreneurship. These skills were honed and acquired with that knowledge as a graduate of ODU with a business management, business administration with a concentration in accounting. Her 13-year tenure as Operation Smile, at Operation Smile, allowed her to apply those strategic planning, business development, and program management at the highest level of international and domestic outreach planning and execution. And additionally, has bore multiple board member positions with Sister City Association of Virginia Beach and the Philippine-American Chamber of Commerce, board positions with the City of Virginia Beach in Vision 2040 planning, and also founder of Enjul, a nonprofit organization she founded to help eradicate human trafficking by engaging, educating, and empowering those folks, especially the women that are victims of that. I'm sure that this was not an overnight decision for Naomi, as many of us who know her. We see a proven leader who cares about people and the Virginia Beach communities we live in, in her countless projects and events that she has been directly and indirectly involved with. Naomi has gotten to know the Virginia Beach City Council, the honorable members, both past and present, and she's got constant interactions with most of these city departments in her goals of event planning and community involvement.
Thank you very much, Vince.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next speaker will be James Banks and Nancy DiMano afterwards.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the members of the Virginia Beach Council for the opportunity to speak to you about Amelia Ross Hammond. I've had the pleasure of working with her on numerous occasions. Over the years, we have been, I've been co-chairs with her of Mayor Sessoms African-American Roundtable, where we worked to bring a lot of the speakers involved in the city so that they could come in and know what's going on within the city for the African-American community. We served on Advisory Board for Achievable Dreams Academy when they was trying to find out about moving from Newport News to opening up over here in Virginia Beach. They were able to establish an Achievable Dreams School here in Virginia Beach. I also worked with her as Treasurer of the African-American Cultural Center before I decided to retire. Finally, she was instrumental in the city of Virginia Beach recognizing the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War, which you had, gave me a nice pin for that. And all about the interactions that I've had with Dr. Ross Hammond, she's been a very conscientious worker. I believe that her experience is valuable to this city at this particular time. We're in a time that we're facing many problems, and I think someone who has experience, has served on the council, will find someone that will be able to hit the ground running and won't slow down the city and allow you to work on the problems that you're dealing with. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Next speaker will be Nancy DiMano, and then Radlin Mendoza.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nancy DiMano. I'm a resident of Virginia Beach for more than 40 years. I am a registered nurse by profession, and I own Best and Dependable Home Health and Professional Nursing Care in Virginia Beach for 33 years. I have known Naomi Astares for more than 10 years. I have known her both professionally and personally. Professionally, I'm a member of the Philippine-American Chamber of Commerce, which Naomi founded to support small businesses, Filipino-American businesses, by providing a venue for small businesses to gather, to get together, and exchange ideas and information about their industry. She's an entrepreneur as well. She and her husband own a travel agency who has helped many Filipino and Americans with their travel plans for many years. Personally, I know Naomi has a very caring heart and is a very dedicated person. She puts in her whole self in any activity or project that she is involved with. When chosen to fill the vacant seat in the City Council, I am confident that Naomi will bring her entrepreneurial spirit, dedication, and love for serving people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Take care.
Next speaker is Radlin Mendoza, and then Marie Batista.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Radlin Mendoza, and I have known Naomi and her family since the 80s. I've been a resident of Virginia Beach since 1998. Before that, I grew up in Ocean View in Norfolk, and my husband and I are business owners in Virginia Beach. We have a law, immigration law firm in the Hilltop area, and all three of our daughters have gone to Virginia Beach public schools. Naomi, over the years, has asked me to support her various nonprofit organizations over the past several years, participate in Virginia Beach events that she thinks will help me and my business and my family and the community. Y'all have already seen her CV. You already know how accomplished she is in business and starting nonprofits that thrive under her direction and in her passionate pursuits. And if you've known Naomi for a long time, like I have, or even maybe for a short time, you know when she asks you for something. You can't just ignore the ask, right? You know because she will, number one, keep at you. She is very persistent. But most importantly, number two, you know that whatever Naomi Astares is doing, she's doing what is best for the community. Thankfully, that community includes two groups of which I'm a part of, a Virginia Beach resident and a member of the thriving, vibrant Filipino-American community. How best to illustrate this? So I went through my text threads, and I pulled a couple of texts from Naomi over the years. So here come some of them. "Are you coming to the state of the city? Will be good for you to come. Let me know, and I'll put your name down." "Can you sponsor Philfest? We small businesses need to stick together." "I'm working on an event at the Sandler to fight against human trafficking. Can you sponsor?" "I'm looking to break the chains of this monstrous atrocity that live in our backyard, together to begin 2019, a better year for so many children. Thanks for coming out and wanted you to experience the next level of our giving back to the community. If any of you guys went to that event, you know that it was world-class." "Can I count on Gardner Mendoza to do a welcome love basket for a rescued survivor coming to our butterfly house? Our next home is for minors. Amazing Grace. Stay tuned." "I have a self-defense class tomorrow, thinking of moms and girls. Can you come?" "Can you sponsor our 5K? Show our love for our children and our community at Mount Trashmore." Actually, I still owe her some money for that. But these are some of the texts that she sent me over the past six years. As you guys can see, Naomi is a giver. She's a giver. She's a doer. She's not just a talker. I had lunch with Naomi a little while after her dad died, and he was the one to inspire her to actually do something about the trafficking victims, not just talk about it. Her dad told her she could do more, and she did. It's ingrained in her to do more. All of these candidates are amazing and wonderful, but y'all should pick Naomi. Thank you.
Thanks a bunch. Appreciate it.
Marie Batista, and then Christina Mapes.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the panel and all those in attendance. My name is Marie Batista, and I'm here to represent the Philippine Chamber of Commerce and by proxy representative of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Coastal Virginia. I am here to present to you why Naomi would be the best candidate for the position of City Council for the Kempsville District of the City of Virginia Beach. I have known Naomi for at least a decade, and on the past 10 years that I've known her, I have seen Naomi humbly and quietly serve the Hampton Roads community. She has led, accomplished, and delivered several projects in the community, such as the Sister City Project, where she was able to help bring six firefighters from the Philippines to come to the city of Virginia Beach to learn the most up-to-date equipment used by the city. With Naomi's wealth of people, she knows she was able to house, transport, and feed the six firefighters from the Philippines. Another program she helped develop is a student exchange program. It was an amazing program that she coordinated. I had the chance of meeting the American students who visited the Philippines, and all these young adults were very excited and happy that they were able to experience this, an experience that they can put into future resumes. If Naomi can bring people from a different country to the United States and vice versa, can you imagine what she can bring to Kempsville District community in the city of Virginia Beach? Enjul, it stands for Equality, Now, Justice, Every Woman, Every Land. Naomi created this nonprofit organization to help fight human trafficking, a project she's very passionate about. In the society we live in today, one of the most important a community should have is diversity. A Filipino-American heritage will certainly bring diversity. Last year during the height of COVID-19, she came to me and said she has the idea of creating multicultural Facebook page with the other minority chambers so that we can disseminate major information to all the underserved communities. And with her idea and help, we create the Coastal Virginia Intercultural Partnership Facebook page. She has been a voice of unity and collaboration throughout the community. She has built and fostered relationships with Hispanic Chamber, the Asian Business Association, the Indian Chamber of Commerce, and several minority organizations. Naomi is also a business owner. She truly understands the difficulties and challenges of minority communities and business owners. All of this are examples of Naomi's selfless acts. Who else would best fit candidate for this position but Councilwoman Naomi Astares? Thank you for talking.
Thank you very much.
Christina Mapes and Victoria Thompson will follow.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, members of City Council. My name is Tina Mapes, and I'm here to speak in support of Rocky Holcomb to fill the vacant Kempsville Council seat. During his remarks on Tuesday, Rocky made two promises. First, he promised to listen to his constituents. When he was campaigning for the 85th House District, I had the opportunity to door knock and visit some civic leagues with him. I witnessed Rocky talking with and listening to constituents, including those who did not support him. Rocky was genuinely interested in their thoughts and did not look over their shoulder looking for the next person that he wanted to talk to. Second, Rocky promised to educate himself on the issues before the council. I can't tell you how many times we've been in a discussion regarding a work-related issue or some issue that was before City Council or the General Assembly, and in the middle of discussion, Rocky says, "Well, I've done a little research, and did you know?" And then he starts telling us some information that none of us knew about this particular It's been my personal experience with Rocky that he will keep those two promises. Finally, you all know that Rocky served in the General Assembly, but what some may not remember is that he ran in a special election to fill a vacant seat. The election was on Tuesday, January 10. The polls closed at 7:00 p.m. Took probably about an hour for the results to come in, and he found out that he had won that seat. Less than 12 hours later, he was in Richmond for day one of the 2017 session. Less than 12 hours, no orientation. He had to hit the ground running. I visited the General Assembly several times during that session and was very impressed with how quickly Rocky learned the ropes and how quickly he established relationships with his colleagues on both sides of the aisle. He still maintains many of those relationships today. I believe Rocky can do the same thing if he's appointed to this council seat. It's for these reasons that I ask you to appoint Rocky to fill the vacant Kempsville seat. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Victoria Thompson, and then Frederick Virtucio? So sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and the rest of Council. My name's Victoria Thompson. I am here asking you to appoint Rocky Holcomb to fill the vacant seat that was left by the Honorable Jessica Abbott. I've known Rocky for many, many years. He's always shown himself to be a man of great character. He's always been someone who has had the highest integrity as anyone that I know. Rocky has demonstrated a pure dedication and commitment to the citizens of Virginia Beach in his, in his work life, in his home life, and while he was a delegate. Rocky's a team player. Rocky has always impressed me. He can talk to anyone. He can talk to people. He can resolve conflict, identify conflict. He works with compassion. He works with communication and compromise. He is, he is one of those gems of people that you get to deal with on a regular basis. You know, as you heard in Rocky's speech on Tuesday, he does not take his responsibility to this community lightly. And I think if you look at Rocky's life and all of the things that he's done with his service to the military, his service to the, to the Virginia Beach community, he will always have that commitment. And I think if you appoint him to this body, he will continue that dedication and commitment to, to our fine city. I'm going to be brief and just say, please vote and appoint Rocky Holcomb. You, you will not go wrong with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Frederick Virtucio, and then Dr. Mamie Johnson. Do I have Frederick here? Okay, Dr. Mamie Johnson, and then after Dr. Mamie Johnson will be Maria Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and distinguished Councilmembers. I am Mamie L. Johnson, a resident of Virginia Beach for the last 38 years and a former member of the city's Public Library Board. Today, I am here on behalf of Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond to support her selection as the appointee to the Kempsville District Council seat vacancy. As you all know, Dr. Ross Hammond served admirably on this council from 2013 to 2016. She retired from Norfolk State University as a distinguished professor emeritus of music, a virtuoso of classical music. After 18 years of dedicated service as a lifetime civic engagement leader, innovator, and scholar, she is a woman of unwavering energy, charisma, and tenacity as she continues to serve the city. as she continues to serve the city of Virginia Beach in multiple capacities, such as she has been civically engaged in several neighborhood activities in the Kempsville District, including my neighborhood, Framingham Homes Association's National Night Out Event for several years. And she continues to participate in several multicultural events within the Kempsville District and across our city. President of the Virginia Beach Beautification Commission, a collaborator with the Business Entrepreneurs of Virginia Beach, as well as women and minority-owned businesses. She advocated for setting up the Kempsville School Business and Entrepreneur Academy, Capital Construction, and Achievable Dream Academy at Sea-Tac Elementary School, and founder and chair of the Virginia African-American Culture Center. As a fearless leader and visionary, she and the board members have worked tirelessly to one day soon bring to fruition the Virginia African-American Culture Center, not only for the citizens of Virginia Beach, but for the state of Virginia and the world to see the rich history of the Virginia African-Americans' contributions toward building this nation. And last but not least, she's the chairperson of the Mayor's Inclusion, Diversity, and Accessibility Idea Commission. I thought of three main points about Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond, and one is leadership. She is a servant leader with a passion for equality, inclusion, and justice for all citizens.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Marie Gonzalez, and then Linda Carrington.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and City Council. My name is Maria Gonzalez. I am a native of Virginia Beach and have the honor to call Naomi not only my friend, but an inspiration. I'm here to show my support in having Naomi sit with all of you to make decisions that will positively affect the district of Kempsville and overall the city of Virginia Beach. Naomi is the anchor and heart of Kempsville, much like the anchor in Camps Landing, which she helped place through her continuous involvement in the sister cities that connect Virginia Beach and Alanga Pope, Philippines. Her persistence and tenacity helps bring together cultures, communities through locally, domestically, and internationally. This is seen through her continued commitment to abolish human trafficking via her charity End Jewel and her extensive work at Operation Smile. She's been involved with several local events such as Phil Fest, Friendship Fest, and Polynesian Fest. She's unrelentless and strives to bring out the best in everyone and all that she touches. Kempsville will benefit from her unconditional love for our city and her district. Virginia is for lovers. Naomi is for everyone. Without Estarz, there is no us. And that's all I have to say.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Linda Carrington, and then after that I have Christine Kalem.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, City Councilmen and City Council ladies and men.
Pull down your mic a little bit so we can hear you a little better. Thank you.
Okay. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Ross Hammond. I'm a resident of Virginia Beach, live at 712 Alaro Court, Virginia Beach. Worked for the city for 38 years, and now I am on the committee with Dr. Ross Hammond for the Virginia African-American Museum. But I'm here on her behalf to ask y'all to please select her because she has been a great help to me and my community, and I know she has been a great help to Kempsville community in the past. And I think she would be a very good person to take over and do the City Councilman again for the neighborhood because she really looks out for us, even though she hadn't been for a while. She still helps Kempsville, and she helps the other communities. That's all I have to say.
Hey, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Christine Kalem, and then after that Marlene Kendrilli.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. I am reading in behalf of another family who can't make it today. Is it, do I have the okay to go ahead and read mine as well on one go?
You've got three minutes.
Okay.
Sorry about that. We've got to be fair to everybody.
Yes, I understand. Mayor Dyer and members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you today. My name is Christine PJ Kaalam. I was born in the Philippines and raised in Virginia Beach. I am married to Mark Kaalam, and we have two wonderful children, Mia Alana and Ezekiel. My husband and I decided to raise our family in Virginia Beach because Virginia Beach has the best school system and relatively low crime rates. I decided to open a business in Virginia Beach, and my business is thriving. I have served in a few commissions, including the Idea Commission. I'm also in the Subcommittee of the Virginia Board of Education, and I also in the past currently passed part of the Minority Business Council Associate Program. Today, I stand before you to state that I am thankful for Rocky Holcomb and Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond for their leadership in serving Virginia Beach as elected officials. I am so thankful of their friendship. Virginia Beach is a wonderful city. In the past few months, our city has seen its challenges. Every challenge our city had, the people of Virginia Beach has proven to be resilient time and time again. I am thankful for our community leaders and God for leading us through the storms. I fully support Naomi Estarz on her bid for City Council. Naomi was raised in Hampton Roads and raised her family here in Virginia Beach. She has always been a team player and a strong community leader. Naomi played a huge factor in my family's decision to stay in Virginia Beach. As a first-generation Filipino-American, our culture is very important to me and my family and my children's upbringing. Naomi has worked tirelessly to perpetuate the Filipino-American culture and assure that the city of Virginia Beach has interwoven the Filipino-American culture into our city. The Philippine Cultural Center is in the heart of Kempsville. Historically, Kempsville, the Kempsville District, has played a big part of Filipino-American history in Virginia Beach. In closing, it's time for Virginia Beach to close one chapter and start a new one. The people of Kempsville have already spoken. It's time to turn a new chapter. I have always respected and believed the constituents should have the first and last word. I hope you will consider appointing Naomi Estarz for the Kempsville District. I know she'll be a great public servant. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marlene Kendrilli, and then Lodavina... I apologize if I'm not saying it correctly. Uvvia?
Welcome.
Uvvia.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marlene Kendrilli, and I'm here today to support my best friend of over 40 years. That's a long time, and that's Naomi Estarz. I currently live in Richmond, but I used to live in the Kempsville District. My extended families are still here, and my oldest son is in the Navy in a station at Dam Neck. So Virginia Beach is in my DNA, so this is very dear to me. I'm here to tell you how lucky you are to have Naomi as a candidate. I've known her for a very long time, both professionally and personally, and she will get the job done. Whatever the task or project may be, it will get done through collaboration and with integrity. That phrase, "Failure is not an option," fits her to a T. I've had the privilege of working with her on a few venture projects, and I can tell you she will work tirelessly and make it happen the right way, the only way for her customers and vendors. Her secret sauce, I would say, is her ability to listen, her drive and compassion for others. No matter where you are in the totem pole or what car you drive, she will support you in the mission that she has committed to. Along with that, she's got the business acumen in finance and operations from nonprofit companies, corporate America, and small businesses. She's one of us that makes Naomi the right choice for your district. Simply put, Naomi will do an awesome job and make you proud because she is competent, inclusive, and has the vast experience to be the best candidate for this job. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Lodavina Uvvia? And then the next speaker will be Tim Oakesman.
Welcome, both of you.
Yeah. Yesterday, I just received this email from Amelia Ross Hammond. She's my friend, and I supported her when she ran for the City Council, you know, years ago. And she said, "Could you come to the courthouse and support me because somebody is resigning?" And she is one of the three people who is left, you know, out of nine. And I called her. I said, "I need somebody to drive me to the courthouse." So here we are. We are in support of Amelia. She's a good friend of mine and her. She used to come to the office. We had a life insurance office, and she used to come when she was running for the City Council. And here we are. We are supporting her. And I didn't even know Naomi is is running for it. I know Naomi too. Yeah, they are good people. Okay? And that's it.
Thank you. And you are an example of the resiliency of the people of Virginia Beach. Thank you for finding a way to get here.
I have been here since 69...
Wow.
68. My children grew up in here.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tim Oakesman, and then Alvy Kulanding.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Tim Oakesman. I'm here to speak in support of Rocky Holcomb. It's rumored that Moses had an 11th commandment when he came down from the mountain, and the 11th commandment was during public hearings, "Thou shalt be brief." So I'll do my best.
A lot of people don't follow the commandments.
I know. We know what's going to happen to them. One of the earlier speakers talked about the challenges that face City Council, and that's part of my thinking too, and why I am so strongly supporting Rocky. Take a look at the challenges you've faced in past years. Developing and maintaining the oceanfront into the complex incredibly successful economic engine it is right now. Town center. Developing our own water system so that we're no longer dependent on the largesse of Portsmouth or Norfolk. That Cavalier Hotel, keeping taxes at the lowest rate in the region. Co-sponsoring an incredible multicultural event, something in the water that transformed the image of the city really worldwide. You've made us the safest city of its size in the entire country. I've got a bunch more, but I'll stop right there. Those are the types of challenges that you have faced in the past, and they're comparable to the challenges that you will face in the future. Rocky, I believe, has the character and the qualities of character and the ability to meet those challenges and to work with other council members in bringing about the right outcome. And I was searching earlier for the right words to describe Rocky's character. I'm just, I think the world of him. He's a great guy. I admire him in a lot of different ways. But the best that I could think of, Rocky and I were talking about scouting the other day. And Boy Scouts have what they call the 12 Points of the Scout Law, and I'm going to recite them to you because I think they describe Rocky. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Ladies and gentlemen, that's Rocky Holcomb. I hope he will be your choice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
The next speaker is Alvy Kulanding, and then the Honorable Shannon Kane.
Welcome.
That was really good, actually. Good evening, Honorable City Council and staff. I am Alvy Aquino Kulanding, and I've been a resident of Virginia Beach for over 40 years. First, let me preface my time with a couple of items. Many do not appreciate what it takes to do what you do, and you send me here to thank you at these meetings. I know that's not what you're here for, but thank you, Honorable City Council and staff, for what you all do to serve this community and its constituents. I also want to acknowledge the candidates for the vacated Kempsville Council seat. Although I may not personally know them, I also do appreciate their willingness to serve the community as they have demonstrated their generosity, have time and efforts to make our city a better place to live. However, I do personally know Norman Dewey Holcomb III, also known as Rocky. I've known Rocky for going on 25 years. I've worked with and for him at the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, where he's currently one of two chief deputies. Why Rocky for City Council? His whole life has prepared him for this position. He's an exceptional person with an exceptional family, and his integrity is above reproach. His time as a United States Marine and a law enforcement officer who rose through the ranks has greatly impacted his worldview on social challenges. So much so, he has served as state delegate in 85th District, where he has many supporters and immeasurable influence to this day. I am the current chairman of the Filipino-American Law Enforcement Officers Association of Virginia, and we endorse Rocky for delegate, not only because of his staunch support from the military and law enforcement, but the minority and marginalized communities as well. His time in the General Assembly also resulted in a joint resolution addressing mental health, which helped to address the strain it was having in our social and justice systems. If appointed, what the city and Kempsville District will get in return is much like our Sheriff Ken Staley, a statesman with invaluable state and local government experience and knowledge for which we will all greatly benefit. Rocky is not about pomp and circumstance. He's results-driven. Although I do feel it is important our representative government mirrors this community, I feel it is more important our representatives possess the credentials and competency to do the work of the people. Rocky is the best suited and turnkey person for the job, and is our hope you appoint him to the seat at the table. Thank you for your time, consideration, and again, I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Your Honorable Shannon Kane, and then Joe Meningo.
Welcome. Nice to see you. How are you doing?
Good to see you. How is everyone?
Good.
I want to congratulate all of you for narrowing down your list of wonderful candidates from the 15 to the nine to the three. You've done a great job, and you have a lot of hard work ahead of you, and you've got a good decision to make today. I want to first commend Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond and Naomi Estarz for running. Thank you for putting your hat into the ring. It is, as you all know, it's not an easy job to sit where you are and balance the budget and all the decisions that come before you each and every week and come to a consensus, or at least six of you to come to a consensus, to make things happen. And having served with Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond, we know what a great job she can do. And having worked with Naomi Estarz throughout the community, I know what a great job she can do in the things that she puts her minds to because she is a powerhouse. But I'm here today to speak on behalf of Rocky Holcomb. I ask you to cast your vote for Rocky today. I've known Rocky for many years, and having run and campaigned with him when he was running for House of Delegates, as a few others have said today, he doesn't know a stranger. He can talk to anyone, and his personality is bigger than life. People love Rocky. They navigate toward Rocky. And when I sat here, as most of you know, it was when Hurricane Matthew was here, and we had all of the flooding that we were working with, and you still are. You still are faced with those challenges. And Rocky co-patroned a bill in the House of Delegates that year for hurricane and flooding reduction. And that speaks volumes. He knows when you put your legislative agenda through to Richmond, what it's going to take to get that passed and how that process works. And I think that's going to be a valuable resource to you as a council member. And he is a team- And he is a team member. He is a team player, and he will look at both sides of the aisle, he will both sides of the issue, and he will work to find a consensus, to build a consensus among you. And I know how difficult that is at times, and someone like Rocky will be able to do that on your team. So I ask you to vote for Rocky, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Miss you guys.
Joe Meningo, and then Ernie Whitehead.
Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council. I'm here on behalf of Rocky Holcomb. I didn't prepare any written notes because what I come to say is from the heart. I've known Rocky for over half of his life. We have served, I am a retired captain from the Sheriff's Office in Virginia Beach. I retired in 2018. Me and Rocky came through the ranks together, and he is truly what everyone has said before me, what type of a person he is. When you think about the slogan that Virginia Beach has when we had our tragic a couple of years ago of V B Strong, that is Rocky Holcomb. Rocky is a legislator. He is, if you appoint him to a seat here on city council, he's not just going to be for the Kentsville district, he's going to be for the entire city of Virginia Beach. So I would ask you, if, in your thoughts and in your decision-making, when you go back to select a candidate, and to take nothing from the other candidates, when you select Rocky Holcomb to his seat in the City of Virginia Beach City Council, you are selecting someone who's not only going to represent Kentsville, but the entire city of Virginia Beach. He has done that throughout his whole law enforcement career. He's done that since he's been here, in, living in Kentsville, and he's done that with all of his friends that he's made throughout the city of Virginia Beach, and those in the other counties in the state of Virginia. So I do ask you to elect Rocky Holcomb this evening because he is the best candidate there is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ernie Whitehead, and then Alex Rosenfeld.
Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Ernie Whitehead, and I was born and raised in the city of Virginia Beach. I've been here fifty-three years. I'm here on behalf of Rocky Holcomb. Rocky Holcomb and I met thirty years ago on the campus of Siwan College in Murfreesboro, North Carolina. We became good friends. Years later, I came to Virginia Beach, while I was here in Virginia Beach, and I applied for the Sheriff's Office, and Rocky was one of the first faces that greeted me. I just want to thank you guys for giving me opportunities to speak on behalf of Rocky Holcomb. Rocky Holcomb is a great family man. He took my family in. He cares a lot about family, cares a lot about the city of Virginia Beach. I think the Kentsville district would benefit on behalf of Rocky Holcomb with his experience as a delegate, along with his past experiences as a delegate. When the citizens talk in the Kentsville district, Rocky will listen, and he will give them a hundred percent in resolving the issue. He will represent all the people of the city of Virginia Beach. He's a good man, and that's why I'm here talking on his behalf. I know your job is hard today, and I want to thank the other candidates, but the decisions you make, I would like for Rocky Holcomb to be your man and represent the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Alex Rosenfeld, and then Edwina Bergano.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's an absolute honor to speak in front of you today. I am here to support Rocky Holcomb for appointment. I have known him for the entire time that I've lived here, which is about eleven years, and he was one of the first people that introduced me to Virginia Beach and really showed me the wonders of Virginia Beach. And I had the absolute pleasure of working with him on his political campaigns. As a young person, I really wasn't listened to with my ideas every time I went out and tried to help out with campaigns, but Rocky listened to me and really listened to my ideas. Because again, as a young person, I just feel like my voice is never heard, but he made my voice heard. He makes everybody that I've seen him talk to their voice heard. He inspired people to get educated on problems in Virginia Beach because he went out there and talked to them. He talked to people who had never even spoken to a representative in their life because he felt like it was important that they know about who is running Virginia Beach and who should be here. In conclusion, I really believe that Rocky is a great member of, a great resident of Virginia Beach, and I believe that he should be appointed for our city council. Thank you so much for having me.
Thanks a bunch. Really appreciate it.
Next speaker is Edwina Bergano, and then Gerald Daniels.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here in support of Naomi Estaras, and I'm a member of the Virginia Beach Board of 2040, and I look forward to reconnecting with that group since we haven't met since, due to COVID. And also, I'm a resident of Virginia Beach for the past thirty-seven years and co-owner of the first Filipino-American dental practice in Virginia Beach. I am here to support Naomi Estaras because she has the passion. She has a passion to serve, and it takes a leader to cross over, to work with people from different points of view, and to make the city a better place to live. I've known Naomi Estaras over twenty years. We've worked on several projects that would enhance the Filipino-American community, such as Phil Fest, many cultural events, and Naomi is the person to deliver the product. She is one that will bring resources to Virginia Beach. So I want you to think about reimagining Virginia Beach, reimagining Virginia Beach so that all of us have the seat at the table. I admire the other applicants of their background and community who serve, but she needs to have her chance to serve as well. And I think that a decision to have Naomi appointed to the city council will bring a great vision to the city because we need to have someone with new ideas that can bring change for the better, not just locally for the citizens of Kentsville, the greater Virginia Beach city, but also on a national level. We are, we are turning to a different chapter in our, in our country. We need to have people from different backgrounds. If you do not have the right people with the right point of view, we cannot get to where we need to get to. We need diversity on city council. I admire all of you to work so hard for the citizens of Virginia Beach. I have benefited from being a business owner, a citizen in this great city of Virginia Beach. But in order to be greater, we need to have people from diverse backgrounds. And I would like, and I am asking you to consider Naomi Estaras. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Gerald Daniels, and then Teresa Orr.
Good evening, afternoon. It is quite a pleasure to stand in front of you guys today to speak about a friend, someone that I admire, Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond. I affectionately call her Doc, and I had a chance to meet her probably going on ten years now. And when I call her Doc, it's because I speak to the fact that she's an approachable and personable kind of person, but she also has achieved so much as an intellectual and a scholar. So when I call her Doc, it brings me closer to her, but yet gives me that level of respect. When I call her, she usually picks up the phone, and when she calls me, I feel comfortable picking up the phone for her. There have been many situations where Doc and I might have disagreed on a particular subject or whatever, but she always has a voice for the community and the young people. We first met when I was launching an event called African of Virginia Beach. She was very supportive in that event, and then only a matter of a couple of years later, we had the pleasure of receiving a city proclamation from her in front of seven thousand people on the beach. And it was quite a moment, but it also reminded me that she was very supportive of new enterprising types of ideas. When it comes to connecting with young people, she stays in touch. If it's not through her little granddaughter, then it's being connected to young people in the community through community events and diversity events. There was a time, yes, there was a time, I have to say, we were at the oceanfront, and we were collecting information for the Human Rights Commission during one of the college beach weekends. And if you didn't know Doc, you would have thought that when we're going through this crowd of eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds, that she might have veered off to the left or, or kind of stayed away from the marijuana smoke over here, or the Hennessy bottle over here. But she walked straight through and actually talked to some of these young people that might have been intimidating to some of you guys, but she walked straight through and actually found out, you know, well, what is it that's bringing you guys out here? I understand that there isn't, you know, and really collected true information that we were able to bring back to the Human Rights Commission. And that let me know, and I went home that night and talked to other people about it and said, you know, I was out there with city councilperson, and we actually flowed right through. She is really one that connects with the people. One of my probably proudest moments honestly right now is she started in position with the Virginia African American Cultural Center, where I provide some services on the marketing side. And I believe that she has really, really shown her passion for the community and the people and the citizens of Virginia Beach. So when we break ground on that building very soon, and when we raise that building, it's definitely going to be
Thank you very much.
A moment for her.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Teresa Orr, and then Dr. Linda Bright.
My name is Teresa Orr, and I live in the Courthouse Estates Division of the City of Virginia Beach. I was asked to speak by Rocky Holcomb, and interestingly enough, he echoed what a lot of the people up here have said, which is that the other two candidates were fine representatives with a very broad experience in city volunteerism and city activities. For the, for the short period of time that this appointment would be, however, I think there's some points about Rocky that I can, I can talk about that might give you some additional information on, on helping you to make your decision amongst all three of these very fine candidates. For thirty years of his law enforcement career as a sheriff's deputy, I spent thirty-four in the police department, and that meant that when he got hired and I had four years on, the drunk arrests that I brought into the jail that were urinated on themselves, defecated on themselves at the worst part in their lives, maybe part of a fatal accident crash that they were going to be prosecuted, and they were at the top of their excitement mode well before CIT, well before cameras in the bullpen, well before de-escalation and deflection, Deputy Holcomb would walk in and with no request, just realize he had a human being in a lot of pain, he would start talking to them and try to de-escalate their feelings and tell them what to expect during the process inside the jail, just responding to that potentially volatile circumstance with a genuine sincerity for the pain this human being was in, and doing it in a manner that made it safer for not only the person that I had arrested, but also for the other deputies as well. And this was in a time well before the focus that we had on doing the right thing at the right time. Over the years, we rose up the ranks. He ended up a little bit higher than I did, but I found that behavior replicated at every level that he was at, a sincere and genuine compassion for the people in addition to maintaining adherence to policies and procedures. But what was interesting about Rocky, as well as many other members of the Sheriff's Department that I've worked with, is that they would take those opportunities, and instead of, this is what we're doing, no discussion, no revision, if you went to them and said, hey, there's a collateral unintended consequence, he would sit down and talk to you and revise what that process was to eliminate the gaps that were a detriment and still meet the objectives for both agencies for the betterment of the citizens. And there's a lot of people in our city that do that, but I've got personal experience of him doing that. His prior experience in the state and local processes can really only be a force multiplier for you over the next month, next several months of his appointment, which will shorten the curve for doing things. And he's made a demonstrated ability to make risky decisions that he's willing to accept accountability for and work through those challenges. So you have fine candidates. My heart goes out to all of you for the decisions that you have to make on this particular appointment, and those are some of my comments about Rocky Holcomb. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Linda Bright, and then Honorable Shannon Glover.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and city council members. I'm honored to be here today on behalf of Naomi Estaras, and I just want to thank you all for narrowing down the list. I think you chose three excellent people. But I'm here in support of Naomi. I have known Ms. Naomi for many, many years. She has an extensive amount of work in our community. She serves on the fundraising committees of Endure Equality, Now and Justice for Every Woman in Every Land organizations, fighting against human trafficking. Recently, an eighteen-year-old woman reached out to Naomi. I was blessed to be able to help her with finding a room, a place for her to live, and she is now, so, you know, until she becomes self-sufficient. So the work that Naomi does in our community is astronomical. Naomi and her husband both work with travel and tourism, and their business has been in existence for over thirty years in the city of Virginia Beach. Currently, she is the president of the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce, and she has given support and extended city services and resources to startups, help start up small businesses. Naomi is passionate in her fight to address the needs in our city, and it is important to her, as she spoke earlier, addressing the concerns that former city councilwoman Jessica Abbott, and passionate about it as well. She is very, very passionate. Naomi is a great communicator and collaborator. She is important. It is important to her to listen. The one thing I've been learning about Naomi, she will sit quiet and listen. As sharp as a tack as she is, she's not going to interrupt you. She wanted to know what your concerns are and hear everything you have to say. Excuse me. I feel that she would be an excellent choice to fill the current vacancy on city council and would truly, truly be an asset to our current board in our city. I thank you so much for allowing me to speak on her behalf.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is the Honorable Shannon Glover, and then Angela Whitehead.
How you doing?
Very well, sir. Mayor Dyer, members of council, Mr. City Manager, friends and family. So Mayor Dyer, I must say before you start the clock, as one of your peers, I should get a few more minutes, but I think everyone will still get three minutes.
I wish I could, but I can't. I was happy for a political answer. I'll let you return the favor one day at one of your meetings.
Very well, sir. Thank you all for allowing me to come speak before you. I represent the great city of Portsmouth, Virginia, and I'm here on behalf of my good friend Naomi Estaras. One word that comes to mind when I think about Naomi as servant leader, you have heard all of the comments, so I don't need to repeat what they are, but we all know as the city said, that in order for democracy to grow and be firm, we must have good leadership. Naomi has demonstrated her leadership in so many ways to the citizens of the city of Virginia Beach. I am honored to be here before you to say to you that she would be an asset to this organization and a tireless champion and advocate for those individuals in the community. I recall back when I ran for mayor in the city of Portsmouth, my campaign slogan was a bold new direction. I know in the city of Virginia Beach, you all have made many strides in the way of diversity and inclusion, and so my ask today, my challenge today, Naomi, if appointed to this seat, would be the first female Filipino-American appointed to the Virginia Beach City Council, I believe. That to me says everything about what you all represent as a community and the forward thinking and inclusion and a diversity commitment that we need in all of our communities. thinking and inclusion and diversity commitment that we need in all of our communities in Hampton Roads. So I encourage you to take that step, look at what we can bring together when we have another voice from another community that makes the team even stronger. Thank you for your time, and I'm privileged once again to be before you.
And thank you Mayor Glover for coming to our city, and we will definitely get together and collaborate. You're always welcome here, and I'm going to come out to P-Town too.
Thank you, sir.
You got it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Angela Whitehead and then Perez Gatling.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Angela Whitehead, Chief Executive Officer of Seniors Unlimited Lifestyles Incorporated, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization who specializes in providing quality, affordable housing for low-income seniors. To Mayor Bob Dyer, to Vice Mayor James Wood, and to all council members, I stand here today to say a few words on behalf of the Honorable Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond this afternoon. Dr. Ross Hammond truly exemplifies a servant's heart. She is very dedicated and committed to community and whatever she puts her hands to. You can always count on her for support in just about every aspect. She is also a woman of character. She's honest, kind, faithful to civic responsibilities, and she models resilience. Dr. Ross Hammond is a humanitarian. She genuinely cares and loves her fellow men. Dr. Ross Hammond was very instrumental in supporting Tranquility at the Lakes project for affordable housing for seniors in the Burton Station community in Virginia Beach. She participated in the groundbreaking ceremony back in 2016 and the grand opening ceremony in 2017. She works well with the seniors at Tranquility. She shares in many of our events and have been very supportive in providing masks and supplies to the residents during this unfortunate time in our lives dealing with COVID-19. Dr. Ross Hammond is so committed to serve that at times she would be, she would receive invitations to several community events in the same day, and she will do her very best to attend most of them by spending at least an hour at each event. That's remarkable. That shows her commitment and support in serving her community. Dr. Ross Hammond have served on city council previously, and she served well. I truly believe that this is another opportunity for her to pick up from where she left off. With Dr. Ross Hammond's years of community service, commitment and experience with the city of Virginia Beach, and the need to have someone to be equipped and ready to work on day one, the Honorable Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond would be the right choice of candidate for such a position. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Perez Gatling and then Sibyl Papas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, members of council. My name is Perez Gatling and I have the honor of serving as the pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church in Virginia Beach, the first African-American church in Virginia Beach. I met Dr. Ross Hammond during the spring of 2018 when I was first called to pastor Ebenezer, and she has been a strong and effective community advocate and a champion in the Baker Community and the city. And as you well know, she was the inspiration and the driving force behind the documentary film Portraits From a Place of Grace, which is a powerful piece in which the residents who grew up in historically African-American communities in Virginia Beach told their stories. Earlier this year, you approved for Ebenezer Baptist Church to purchase the parcel of land that is right across the street from us and use it as a parking lot. Well, that initial conversation was with Dr. Ross Hammond and myself, and then she carried the conversation to Councilman Jones. That was the initial conversation. Of course, once Councilwoman Wooton came aboard, she took the reins and set up meetings with those of you who were available, and the rest is history. Dr. Ross Hammond was present during the first town hall meeting that Council, that Congresswoman Elaine Luria held at Ebenezer Baptist Church, and Council and Congresswoman Luria presented her with a letter and read a letter that commended her for her community service, and of course, that record is filed in the U.S. Congressional Records. Dr. Ross Hammond is an active member of the Western Bayside Community United, and just recently, she participated in our planning meeting with Eastern Virginia Medical School to initiate the Beyond Clinic Walls program. And this program is designed to improve the long-term health of the citizens in our underserved We were pleased to learn that she was able to work with the city to install an internet smart pole in our community, which enables our children to be more productive in their online studies, and we support the Virginia African-American Cultural Center. Ebenezer Baptist Church, Virginia Beach is proud and is honored to support Dr. Ross Hammond in her bid to fill the vacancy on council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Sibyl Papas and then Barbara Messner.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here today to show my support for Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond. I represent mothers, business owners, professional women, and voters who live in Virginia Beach and are actively engaged in local politics. We know local politics has the greatest impact on our neighborhoods and our lives, and we support Amelia Ross Hammond as our representative on council. Dr. Ross Hammond has shown her leadership in the city in the recent past. As a former councilwoman and true representative of the Kempsville district, during the flooding a few years ago, she visited families to offer support in Kempsville as well as Windsor Woods. While serving as a council member, she received over sixty-four thousand votes in her 2016 reelection bid. As a professor at Norfolk State University, Dr. Ross Hammond spent her life in education and embodies the true diversity we in the city of Virginia Beach represent. She started an annual Small Women and Minority-Owned Business Workshop through the city's Office of Economic Development to assist and teach SWAM business owners how to get work through the program. I got to know Dr. Ross Hammond many years ago when we traveled together in Richmond to advocate for Virginia Beach at the General Assembly. With many of you assisting and supporting, we have helped Dr. Ross Hammond and the city start the Virginia African-American Cultural Center. I have been with Dr. Ross Hammond as she solicited support for the project while in Richmond at the General Assembly and can attest to her unwavering support of Virginia Beach as the best city to reside in the Commonwealth. While we were at the General Assembly Building, legislators opened their office doors to us and welcomed Amelia in. She obviously had deep personal connections with many of our legislators. She had established a rapport by reaching across the aisle, joining with both Democrats and Republicans to get things accomplished. Amelia knows the people, knows the issues, and understands the big picture. She is a consensus builder who is community-oriented. Dr. Ross Hammond is working to preserve and promote the rich African-American history and how it has contributed to the fabric of this great city. She is a team player and will work with her fellow council members and citizens to enhance our quality of life. Please join me in my support of Dr. Ross Hammond.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Barbara Messner and then Joshua Nicholson.
Welcome.
Thank you for turning on the air cleaners, it's much better in here. First, these daytime meetings at 4:00 PM in 1963 crowded council chambers with all these parking lots filled with workers restricts access. I oppose the rush to pick today and let them serve over a year without being elected. I oppose the push for diversity based on color, race, and religion. This criteria divides us, our country is divided, and it doesn't guarantee morality, fiscal responsibility, or loyalty to all races and all people. Mr. Towers, my rep, he has never responded to me ever, and I send a lot of emails, which y'all are aware of. Mrs. Astadas is related to Ron Villanueva and has helped fund his campaigns since at least 2011 and probably before that. I live near Red Wing and Red Wing Park is now a commercial venue and a political party place. And like I said, there's too many groups that elect their candidates. I think the candidates, you know, should meet with the people and, okay, how many budget meetings and hot topic items has she and all these other candidates attended? I come to these meetings, I pay attention, I haven't, almost everybody that runs just runs without coming to the meeting and getting involved, so we don't have firsthand knowledge. I oppose Ross Hammond, she voted for all uncontrolled growth, light rail, and we should have better bus service. You know, light rail is outrageous, and we still don't have decent bus service. She was funded by Sesams of Town Bank, Gold Key, Thirty-First and Cavalier Project. People need to look at VPAP and see, follow the money. Mr. Rocky Holcomb, who I don't know, has a full-time job as a sheriff, which, you know, may be a conflict, but, you know, I wish I knew more about him because I definitely don't want the other two candidates and wish we had more time to research and meet them before we have to make these comments. Yeah, he ran in, I think for Congress, and his Facebook page is promoting
Thank you very much.
Promoting the vibe, which I oppose, taxpayer subsidized.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joshua Nicholson and then Andrew Jackson.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, city council. Appointing unelected officials goes against the very fabric our constitutional republic stands for. Libertarian Party of Hampton Roads is against city council appointing someone to an elected office position that the people did not choose. The city council seat vacant by Jessica Abbott's departure should remain vacant until special election can be held. Citizens of city council, citizens of the city have been told that would not take place until November 2022. Under the Code of Virginia Title 24.2, Chapter 6, Article 5, there is nothing stating special election cannot be held on the same day as the 2021 general election. Allowns citizens of Kempsville to pick the representative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Jackson and then it'll be Brian Luciano.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mayor, council, city manager. I don't have a candidate in this race, but I do look at candidates that have been in an office, an elected office, or in a particular job, I look at those, and then I look at what things are impacting the city now. What things will this council have to vote on? And I look at comments that have been made about certain things that are coming up. So that's how I kind of pick and choose where my likes and things are. And I don't know how many of you will pick a candidate because they had a great speech, pick a candidate because you know him for a specific thing. I know all of those candidates, candidates, one way or another. Rocky, know him. Went on a bus trip with him, know him. I know Dr. Ross Hammond. I know of her work on the council, and I know her work after the council. I've seen Neil School Board. She doesn't know me, but I know her, I make that a point. I've been in this city since 1956 and a permanent citizen since seventy-five. Started on this venture of politics when Mayor Myra Oberendorf ran. I've seen all of you run. I've seen you. I listen to you, I watch you vote. I know of some important things that are coming that you're going to have to vote on. It's moving across the country, you're going to have to vote on it. The state has already had their vote. So I look at where the attitudes are towards certain things and how it's going to affect the community as a whole and the community that I do a lot of work in, the African-American community. We have issues. Those issues need to be resolved. Whether they're admitted or not, we have issues. And so I look at you now to say, here are the three people that you have brought this far. Whether I agree with how they got here or not, that's immaterial, they're here, and those are the people that you're going to have to pick from, those three. I ask you to choose wisely, because that's another, what, three and a half years? Pick wisely and do what you're supposed to do, but understand, you pay for your choices in the end. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brian Luciano and then it'll be Conrad Chesventer.
Hey, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me, Mr. Dehaney, thank you. First, I just want to assure everyone my comments have nothing to do with compression. So I just want to say that on behalf of the nearly five hundred police officers that the PBA represents, I'd like to voice our support for Rocky Holcomb to serve in the vacant seat. Rocky has spent a lifetime in public service, first in the Marine Corps, then again in the Sheriff's Department. This commitment to public service will serve this city, especially in a city that so deeply understands what that means. Now, I know what you're thinking, a police officer nicknamed Lucky endorsing a sheriff named Rocky, it just makes sense.
It's a movie.
So, but clearly, clearly, we believe that Rocky will be an asset to the men and women of public safety. But beyond that, we believe that he will be an asset to all of you. Rocky would be in a unique position to provide context as to how the decisions you make affect all of public safety, but not only all of public safety, your entire workforce. He will lend perspective as to what it means to work in our city and to live by the decisions that you make. His time as a delegate will be invaluable as you deal with Richmond and advocate for bills that could help improve our standing here in Virginia Beach. As the profession of law enforcement becomes ever increasingly politicized by politicians, he can serve you well as a subject matter expert and provide insight and guidance on the difficult decisions that you must make. And I think that is probably the most important point that I can make for our police officers is he would be a subject matter expert when we so desperately need a subject matter expert to unveil all the things that concern us. With all of that, we give a very strong endorsement for Rocky.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Conrad Chesventer and then Carl Wright.
The strongest potential candidate to me was Michael Feggans. He studied politics, he was in the Air Force, lives here instead of going elsewhere to make a living. He wanted to donate his council salary to charity because he wanted to be popularly elected. I'm confused why someone like that isn't a finalist, alas. Among the final candidates, I appreciate Delegate Holcomb's service and personality, great personal dude. However, I want stronger police reform, and I'll take that into consideration, so on to Dr. Hammond and I. to Dr. Hammond and Naomi Estares. I'd love to have Rocky on the beach for the show, by the way, but either ways, down the line. I love what Dr. Hammond has done for our city. I admire she served. I hope to work many of her city goals into the city in the future. But sadly, I'm a little bit of a petty person, and she respectfully donated to our mutual friend and my former challenger in 2019 to 2020. So I hope you select Naomi Estares, a strong leader of a woman representing our thriving Filipino community. Our council can use additional multicultural diversity. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Carl Wright, and then Art Icleo will be the last speaker.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This is the first time I'll come up here, and I'm not supporting anyone right now. And I'll say this, this is the first time I can really say I support anything that Ms. Massager says. I can't believe it either. But I do agree with her on something. This whole process to me was, it was, it's not speaking for the people. You know, when I look around in the chambers, in the city chambers, I don't see the representative, representation of 425,000 folks. I see a lot of friends and family, you know, organizations, but we need people that are up here that are actually speaking for the total citizenry. We've got two candidates that were in and out of office. We have another candidate hopes to get into office. But what about the people that they will be representing? The total majority? You know, I mean, it probably going to be a tough job to figure out how to do this. I've been to these appointments many times. I've seen Ms. Kane, a lot of folks have been appointed, but today I had, and I had, and what really came to, what brought it to me was when the young man that came up here that actually worked for the city, worked for the city manager, and I liked what he said. He said, "Well, if I do be placed in this seat, I won't run. That would be it." He said, "I'm coming here to do a job," and then after that, you know, he's gone. So I think that if you really want to be on City Council, you should run to be on City Council. That's the process. If you're not willing to run to be on City Council, just like in a sport, boxing, you ain't willing to get hit in the face, don't get in the ring. You know, so my point is, is that you guys are going to do what you want to do, but I think Mr. Jackson and the other person said it well, pick them for the right reason. I have an issue with that team player thing. That frightens me. I'm a team player, you know. I like independent thinkers. You know, what about the people that think independently? The ones that may not agree with everything that you guys are doing and saying? So, you know, it's just with me, it's the process. You know, I think that people that want to run for City Council, be on City Council, needs to run for City Council. And when you do pick the folk, let's not always pick a team player. Let's pick independent thinkers, people that are willing to go against the grain, people that are willing to go out into community and find out what's happening in the community and what people need, the actual people that aren't coming here that are friends and families and that type of thing. So right now, I'm just in the middle of that, and just I'm concerned about the choices that you guys will make. I got some idea who you will choose, but with that said, thank you and appreciate you guys' hard work.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Art Icleo.
Hey, good afternoon. So I'm here in, to support the candidacy of Naomi Estares. I have known them for a while, so I actually saw the announcement in Facebook. So I'm like, oh, this is big time. It's amazing. This is the first time it's going to be, I'm not doing this really, but I'm going to do this. Because having been here in Virginia Beach for a while, I have a daughter in the Marines, so she's in the Marines. I have other kids that is not being, I think, heard of. Having this all together in me, I'm like, I need somebody, we need somebody in the delegation of the Council of Virginia Beach so as to address education, legacy to our children. So I feel responsible to vouch for Naomi Estares. Installing Naomi Estares is installing the Filipino American community. So everybody will feel secure, committed, and of course, a good, feel equal opportunity for, just like me. And I've been trying to get into SBA, but I think I am just being misunderstood. So with empowerment or the power of install, installing Ms. Naomi Estares, this would give help to people like me, and of course, not only me, around the community. So also, I have known the Estares for a while. They've been helping a lot. Like if there's mobile services for like passport services, they're here. The US Embassy, the Philippine Embassy will come to their office to help us. So just one of the best services that they could give, not only for Virginia Beach, but I guess in the future for our children. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Can I have a selfie?
How about later?
Oh, okay. Good evening. Thanks.
Okay. Oh, times have changed. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussion, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. And that is for City Council Kempsville seat to have a motion.
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second, votes open. Okay, at this point, we are going to recess into executive, and we will be back after due deliberation. Thank you. A motion to certify the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Movement and a second, the vote is over.
Over.
Open.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have certified the closed session in accordance with the motion to recess.
Thank you. At this point, do we have a motion to approve the filling of the Kempsville seat?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Norman D. Rocky Holcomb for the position of Kempsville District.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? The vote is open.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Sorry, I opened it.
All righty.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have appointed Rocky Holcomb to City Council.
He needs to show up.
I would like to thank all of the people that put their hat into the ring, the three finalists. It was a tough decision. But let me just say that we are so proud of the way everyone conducted themselves with civility and mutual respect. And thank you for all the people that came out to support the people. You know, that was, this is what really makes Virginia Beach such a great place, it's the people. Thank you all. God bless you, we are adjourned.